Katturudaiya parisutha namathukke maigamundavada.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
Eerandham rajaakkal midhalam, erandham adhikaram, midhal vasanathain avasipu.
Second Kings, second chapter, let's read the first verse.
Katturudaiya parisutha namathukke maigamundavada.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
Paraloguthukke eduthukollappadapogura oru manidhanidaya payanathin thovakkatai naamige parkaram.
Here we see the beginning of a man who is about to be taken to heaven.
Eerandu veer andha payanathile pogurare, oru van paraloguthukke eduthukollappadapoguran, machoruvan andha uyya, aman viddugura uyyatthai thodara poguran.
Two people are there in that journey, one is going to be caught up to the heaven, another one is going to follow his mission.
Onndri Eliya, machondri Elisa.
One was Elijah, another was Elisha.
Elisa katturudaiya uyyatthi cheyumudiyaga, putidaga vandhamanidhan.
Elisha was a newcomer to do the ministry of the Lord.
Eliya uyyatthi cheydu, paraloguthukku pogukkudiyay oru manidhan.
Elijah was a man who had completed the ministry of the Lord and was about to go to the heaven.
Indha Eliya eduthukollappadapogurathu oru devunde thittamaga irundhadu.
Elijah being caught up was the plan of the Lord.
Priyamanaule eduthukollappadhal enbadu, putiyarpattale ulle oru anubavam.
Being caught up is an experience that is found in the New Testament.
Inimel varugarakalangalil sabay aanadu, Esukrisuvin varugainpadi, varugainpodu eduthukollappadapogurathu.
In the days to come, the church will be caught up in the coming of Jesus Christ.
Eduthukollappadhal enbadu esuukum, esuunde manavattikum sondhamana oru anubavam.
And getting caught up is the experience that belongs to Jesus and the bride of Jesus Christ.
Anal palayarpattile erandu veer eduthukollappattare.
In the Old Testament time, two people were caught up.
Onndri Eliya, machondri Enoch.
One was Elijah, another was Enoch.
Indha erandu veerame palayarpattile eduthukollappattavare.
And both were caught up during the Old Testament.
Anal putiyarpattale esu krisu eduthukollappattavare.
In the New Testament, Jesus Christ was caught up.
Adutthu sabay aanadu eduthukollappadapogurathu.
Next, the church is going to be caught up.
Idi kurithu namu vedathile palathyali vanna vasanangalai nam parka iyalum.
And we can see many verses about this in the Bible.
Apposolodaiyadnabudigil midhalam adhikaratile, padinora vasanathile, vaanathukke eduthukollappattai indha esu, marbudhim varuvar enre angai chollaappattadu.
In Acts 1 chapter 11 verse, it is said that Jesus who was caught up to the heaven shall come back again.
Onbadha vasanathile avargal parthukundrakail, avar uyera, avargal kankalukku munbahaave eduthukollappattar.
In the 9th verse, it is said that he was taken up even when they were watching him.
Esukrisu eduthukollappattavare.
Jesus Christ was the one who was taken up.
Adubole sabayunkuda eduthukollappadakudiyay oru sabay.
And also similarly, the church also is the one that will be caught up.
Adainam vilingikollavendidhu avasiam.
And it is essential for us to understand that also.
Midhalam Tesalonikiyir naankam adhikaratil nam parkumbadhu.
In First Thessalonians 4th chapter, we see.
Padinela vasanam enna sollukaradu.
And what does the 17th verse say?
Amehangalmeel avargalodu kuda aagayathil nam eduthukollappattu, ividamai eppludum katturudune kuda iruppom.
And we also will be caught up along with him together in the clouds and we will be with him forever.
Ingai nam parkumbadhu, Eliya eduthukollappadapoguran enghera vaartai angai chollaappattukradu.
Here it is said that Elijah was about to be taken up.
Indha eduthukollappadhal enbadu rapture enre alakappadukradu.
This experience of being taken up is also called as rapture.
Indha olakathu vittu oru manidhan paraloguthukku poi chera kudiyay oru anubavam.
The man having the experience of reaching heaven from this world.
Orutthan marithu paraloguthukku porudala.
It's not one dying and going to heaven.
Marithu paadaathukku poguradala.
Or not dying and going to hell.
Uyeroode urukumbadhu de marayindu pogura, devanode enayindukulugura oru anubavam.
And even when you are alive, it's an experience of merging and uniting with God.
Indha eduthukollappadhal enbadu oru arumayana oru anubavam.
The experience of being taken up is a good experience.
Ah, idaidan putiyarpattu sabay edirbarthu kaathukundrakradu.
And this is what the New Testament church is expecting and waiting for.
Eerandham rajaakkal, erandham adhikaram, midhalam vasanathinpadi, ingai Eliya eduthukollappadukran enghera oru vaartai chollaappattukradu.
According to Second Kings 2:1, it is said that Elijah was taken up.
Ebreyerkelanu nirubam padinora adhikaratte nam parkumbadhu.
In Hebrews 11th chapter, we see.
Angai veeram enna sollukaradu.
And what does the Bible say here?
Aindha vasanathile.
In the 5th verse.
Eenooku eduthukollappattan enruchollaappattadu.
It is said that Enoch was translated.
Priyamanaule indha eduthukollappadhal enbadu, oru silarukku narakkara oru mukkiyamana anubavam.
The experience of being caught up, that will happen only among a few people.
Indha anubavathu than sabay aanadu edirbarthu kaathukundrakradu.
And the church is eagerly expecting this experience.
Oru devunde pillai enruchullukaravan, avani eduthukollappadakudiyavanaga, maravendidhu avasiam.
It is very essential for a child of God who says that he is a child of God, he should be caught up.
Apriyanaal avan pogavendiyapaday enna?
If it is so, in what path he should go?
Ah, idai nam sariyanavathile vilingikollavendom.
This we have to understand clearly.
Idi than indha kaale velai, tamre sanajanathodu sabayodu devan pesa vanchikiraa.
This is what the Lord desires to speak with his church and people.
Andha eduthukollappadhal enbadu, ellarukku narakkara oru sambavam ala.
That getting caught up will not take place in all people.
Ah, uyeroode urukkum nam enre Korinthiens le chollaappattundhalum.
Though it is said in Corinthians, we who are alive.
Anal avarude evargal matthramay eduthukollappadam udiyum.
But only those who belong to him will be caught up.
Uyeroode nam ellaru nitradavidhal enruchollaappattukradu.
It is said that all of us will not sleep.
Adu, adukuriyathagudi ularulai parthuchonnava oru vaartai.
It is the word said unto those who are worthy of it.
Katturudaiya parisutha namathukke maigamundavada.
Glory be to the holy name of the Lord.
Eliya eduthukollappadakudiyay oru pagai.
And it was the time in which Elijah was about to be caught up.
Avan eduthukollappadumun Gilgalil irundhan.
And before he was caught up, he was at Gilgal.
Eerandavada avan Bethelukku ponnan.
Secondly, he went to Bethel.
Moondraavada avan Jerigo.
And thirdly, he went to Jerigo.
Naankavada avan Yordana kuppunan.
Fourthly, he went to Jordan.
Adukipinbu dan avani eduthukollappattan.
Only after verse, he was taken up.
Apriyanaal sabay eduthukollappadavendumanal, oru putiyarpattu uyyanu viswasiyum eduthukollappadavendumanal, avargal pogavendiyapaday idudan.
If the church or the New Testament believer or worker has to be caught up, they have to go through this path.
Esukrisu indha olakathal urukkum badhu, naapodhi idangalukka payanamana enruch, mattiyilugana suvisheshetin adipadail nam parka iyalum.
Based on the gospel written by Matthew, we can understand that Jesus, when he was in this world, he went to forty places.
Oray edathukku marbudhi marbudhi ponnar, adilai palasatiyangel adangi irukradu.
He went to one particular place again and again, and there are many truths hidden in that.
Ningal Eliyaavin vaalkaye parthal, adukku munbaha oru priyasarathramay irukradu.
When we see the life of Elijah, before that, there is a big history.
Anal avigal avanai paraloguthukke eduthukollavillai.
But those things didn't take him up to the heaven.
Avanude palayavalkaye ningal parthal.
When we observe his old life.
Elupudalum irundhadu, vilchiyulum irundhadu.
There were both revival and false.
Arupudangalum irundhadu, avanude avanambikkikulum irundhadu.
There were also miracles and his unbeliev.
Oru vidhatthala daiisaliyayirindhan, innoru vidhatthala kolayaga irindhan.
On one side, he was bold, on the other side, he was a coward.
Oradathla akniyay avan vaanathulandha neeradiyaga irakkinaan.
On one occasion, he brought down fire straight from the heaven.
Oradathla bayandu boyi, thanade velekarni vittu vittu odi vittan.
On one occasion, he feared and left and ran away from the servant.
Orukattal avan vaanathay adaittan, vaanathay terandan.
On one occasion, he shut the heavens and another occasion, he opened them.
Orukattam varum badhu, nan setuponan, nalama irukvendre saavai vanchitann.
On one occasion, he desired saying that he wanted to die.
Priyamanaule krishtava vaalkaila yertathalvagal sagajamanaadu.
In the Christian life, ups and downs are common.
Idu viswasa pathi enbadu oru vitthiasamanaadu.
The spiritual, the faith life is a different life.
Manida arivikke namakkayethada oru anubavam.
And it is beyond the comprehension of human mind.
Anal kattarani ningal moodumayaga patthikundhal, indha pathi ungalukke solamabaga amayum.
But if you hold on to the Lord steadfastly, this path will be easy to you.
Kattar avanude vilchiyim parkavelai, elupudalaiyim parkavelai.
The Lord neither saw his fall nor his revival.
Avan setupogavendumendru, virmina badhu, avanai saavagurukkum devan anumadikamu vellai.
When he desired to die, the Lord didn't permit that also.
Uyya vedaamendru chully, avan odhinginabodhu, uyyathu, avanai vidadamel devan marbudhim seyya vaitaar.
When he avoided the ministry, the Lord forced him to do the ministry continually.
Ivagilindhi enna vilingikollukaram.
From these things, what do we understand?
Devan oru nokkathu oru manidhanile kundaadu, adi niravetcha, avar yavlabhum irangi varuvar.
If the Lord has an intention about any man to fulfill that, he will discern to do that.
Oru veela ningal devunde thittathinpadi, ningal jivikamal, pathi marii poirukkalam.
You might have gone away from the Lord, not doing according to the plan of the Lord.
Anal indraikupparaloguthukku poguravali, ningal purindukulathan vendum.
But today, you have to understand the ways to go to the heaven.
Naatkal konchamaga irukradu.
As the time is short.
Kaalam kurigikundrakradu.
And the days are short.
Nam rachikappattakalangalavide, ippludukkarakalam mikavum kodidu kurigiyadu.
And before we were saved and now the time is very short.
Midhalavadu, ivan Gilgalil irundhe purappadukradu.
And first of all, he left Gilgal.
Oru uyyakkarunde pathayim, illavatal paraloguthukku pogukkudiyapaday, enruch nam erandu vidhangelile, nam idai eduthukollai iyalum.
We can consider this as the path of the worker of God and as the path that goes to heaven.
Onndri uyyakkaravil siyoonukku pogha, indha pathile pogurare.
On one side, the one path, the workers go to Zion in this path.
Viswasiyil, Erislimukku pogha, indha pathile pogurare.
And the believers heading to Jerusalem, they go in this path.
Nam paraloguthalai edavorum mulaila pogurajanangal ala.
We are not the people going to one corner in the kingdom of God.
Nam paraloguthalai esuode irukkara, andha menmiana anubavathukku pogukkudiyajanan.
And we are the people going to that heavenly experience of being with Jesus.
Aba paraloguthukku poravangalai esuode irukkumattangala.
If it is so, those who go to the kingdom of God, won't they be with Jesus?
Angaiyum, andha velichathil irukkara janangal irukradare, velicham kodukkukudiyajananakum irukradare.
There also, there are people, those will be found in the light and those who spread the light.
Nam damalnadhalan irukkaro.
We are in Tamil Nadu.
Anar, kapital vandhu Chennaile irukradu.
But our capital is in Chennai.
Ah, adubole.
Similarly.
Paraloguthalai esuode irukkara oru anubavam irukradu, rachikappadukara janangal, andha maigamun velichathil irukkara oru kuuttamukum irukradare.
There is an experience of being with Jesus and also there is an experience of people found in the light of that.
Idaidan putiyaboomi, putiyavanam enruch nam peshuttham.
These places, we call as the new earth and new heaven.
Anal sabay poguradam, putiyay Erislim.
But the place where the church goes is new Jerusalem.
Uyyerukal pogurathu, adin thalainakramagai siyon.
But the workers go to the capital that is Zion.
Adi nam vilingikollavendidhu avasiam.
And this is essential for us to understand.
Midhalavadu, indha pathi ilvandapinbu, namude ilakkay paralogam.
Having come in this path, our destination and target is the heaven.
Oru vedo, oru caro, oru sottu, oru kaliyanamo, idu namude ilakkay ala.
The house are a property or a car, nothing, that is not our destination.
Midhalavadu devunde rajyathetthi thedungal, ivagil ellam ongelukku kuda kodukappadum.
First of all, seek the kingdom of God, all these things will be added unto you.
Adinathani eya veeram chullukradu, immaikaga oru van krisuvai pinbathu annanal, avan paridupikappadathakavan enruch chullukradu.
That's why the Bible says, if anyone follows Christ for the worldly things, he will be in a miserable state.
Indha olakathal unakkay enna tehuyu, adit paramapida, arindukaradu, adi yertavela il, unakkathara, avar unmayulavara irukradu.
The heavenly father knows your physical needs and he is faithful to give that at the right time.
Adi ningal viswasiyikavendom.
And that we have to believe.
Avari theduvurugal midhalavadu, avar undu enruch viswasiyikavendom.
And those who choose him, they should believe that he is.
Apri tamay theduvurugalukka, avar balanallikkaravare enruch, ningal viswasiyikavendom.
And also, we should believe that he will give the efforts and rewards to those who seek him.
Apri ningal paraloguthukkaavu, unguade ilakkay, unguade kankalay, unguade sindhayathirupumbadhu.
When you fix your mind and your eyes at the destination of the heaven.
Midhalavadu nam maravendiyadam Gilgal.
The place where we have to come first is Gilgal.
Ididam mikavum mukkiyamana oru thodakkayadam.
And Gilgal is a very important starting place.
Oruveela ningal pentikosiliparandukkalam.
You would have been born in Pentikosil.
Illavatal putidaga ningal vandukkalam.
Or you may be a newcomer.
Idukku munnalay apduri ningal, adapatti prachana kadayadu.
And before this, however, it's not a matter.
Anal midhalavadu, Gilgalin anubavam, paraloguthukku pogura, oru uyyanukku oru viswasiyukum thavai.
But the experience of Gilgal should be found in both a worker and a believer.
Gilgal enruchonnal, vattam enruchartam.
Gilgal means a circle.
Vattam enralan, anade sariyana vellakkamennana, midhalavadu indha pathile vandaparag, ungalakuritha devasiththam ennangradu vilinganau.
The right definition is, once you come into this path, you should understand what is the will of God about you.
Indha churchill namay oru memberakundukkarara, illavatal oru scuffoldinga vachirukkarara, illavatal indha sabayna oru tuunay namavaitirukkarara.
Whether he is kept as a member or as a support or a pillar in the church.
Ningal adani vilingikollavendidhu avasiam.
It is essential for you to understand that.
Indha churchik nam vandrukroona, nam paraloguthukku ponnu, adudan namakkum mukkiyam.
We have come to this church means we should go to the heaven that's important.
Midhalavadu, evalibergalo, vayavibergalo, devasiththam ennangradu, midhalavadu, analyze panunga.
Whether young or old, first of all, you analyze what is the will of God.
Thayusayidu vivagamakada sakodhrasakodhrigal yaravudurindha, vivagathukku munbahaave, ningal, ungalakuritha devunde thittam enbadu, enna enbadu, devunathal kurtthu vilingikolungal.
Unmarried brothers and sisters, if you are here, first of all, you understand the will of God from him and then you follow that.
Avasarappattu ningal vaalkaila, adutthapoguriki, kalyanam enrapoguriki, ningal kaaliduthu vikke vandam.
Hesitely, do not step into the next path, that is marriage.
Vayipadu paavam enruchan cholla vellai.
I don't say that taking that step is sin.
Adu devunde thittamanala, avila kaal vayinka.
If it is the plan of the Lord, you take that step.
Ah, ungal uyyathin alaippu irukkum badhu, ningal, machorupogurikil ningal kaaliduthu vikke badhu, ungalala, ungalukku prachana, katnapayanukku, bonnukku prachana, andha rendu kuudungalukku, palap prachanakalvaro, future oru kostina kaniikum.
When you have a calling for the ministry of the Lord, there will be problems if you get married and your future will be a question.
Nan Chennaile irukkum badhu, oru pillaki vivagamanaadu.
When I was in Chennai, sister got married.
Avas C S A la than kalyanam maninall.
And she got married in the C S A.
Sivakasi la than kalyanam nandadu.
The marriage was solemnized that.
Na oru sutthu sutthi kadesal, naanu Sivakasi vanduseyandhen.
I too came to Sivakasi then.
Ah, vandhu badhu enna nandadu.
Then what happened?
Avagil vaalkaila bayangara prachana vandadu.
She faced a lot of troubles in her family.
Kadesal diverse agaradu, marikotla case akyavittadu.
And finally, there was a suit for divorce.
Orunal kolandheyoda vandhalazal.
And she came with a child and wet.
Oruveela enakkuyu uyyathukka alaippu irundukkumon, naadu vilingikollam vittuttanoo, naan chunnai, idu vandhu kanna kettaparagil, kanna kurudanadu, kanna pudigunaparag, ni ennaseera, yostchupakara oru anubavam chunnan.
And I said, it is a very late realization.
Ningal adi vilingikollavendidhu avasiam.
And you have to understand this.
Ningal midhalavadu, naan bayaapatturannu, yaarun vandicharani.
Don't think that I threaten you.
Ah, na ungal bayaapattara, kalyanakattavudam nipattara, abhilan vandikari. Ninga kalyanathukka readyavanga, ellas settana, naan pannivay, naangal pannivayikiro.
And if you come ready, we will solemnize your marriage.
Oru paya uyyathukvaranu, idhe madhiri la vandhu ukkandrundha.
A boy was sitting here, waiting to come for the ministry.
Rindunall eskepai odiyay vittan.
In two days, he escaped and fled.
Na irukkara dattal irundhanavan.
And he was in the place where I was.
Orunal vandhu na vivagampananoo, kalyanakpananoo, enakkadjaumunangal chunnan.
One day, he came to me and asked me to pray for his marriage.
Naan chunnai, ni madhiri la centrifithumla irundhadu tha kelyvibattene, ippena adutthat trackla vanduttiyane kettan.
I asked him, I came to know that you are in the centrifithum, but now you have come on the next track.
Naan oru elupudalal vittan.
In revival, I went there.
Abrin chullidu, avan penbakkarukka readyaita.
And he was ready to see brides.
Apa naan chunnai?
Then I told him.
Oru pricing nandakkara timeadu.
And here, a pricing is going.
Dawn pricing timeadu.
It was the dawn pricing.
Neepo.
You go there.
Kattar unte enna besarara, adavandhu solin.
You come and tell me what the Lord says unto you.
Avanike apri besinaran, enakkidiriadu.
I didn't know how he talked.
Avan vandhu oru arumayana vasanachunna, maanaviyekkandadegar, jeevanekkandadegar, anna kattar besinarunna.
He said that he that founded the wife, founded life.
Paana, ayiduke solunna, kalyanathukka kattar vasanam besararanu solray.
Even for marriage, the Lord speaks to people.
Right, okay, naanam urichu chustan, kalyanathu, yana, idukuparagavunak vasanam thavaiyil.
I myself solemnize the marriage and he doesn't need any other verse.
Avande kankal, Erislimukku ponnaparag, innam, kanna pudigisio, enruthukki vikke mudiyadu.
When his eyes have gone to Jerusalem, there cannot be a cast on Zion again.
Kalyanakattin alla than kolandheyoda irukkaran, thappulla.
He is happily leading a life with children.
Unakkavu oru velicham kadaikanau.
And you need a light.
Ah, renduvee kadaikalia, amayidya, konya waitpantha.
If you don't receive both, you wait for a while.
Adu maru, adukaaga, peleyamta besanam maru, besuvaru, ni thiripi thiripi, innoru trip, innoru trip, innoru tripunnu, kenchikita irukkakudadu.
But light Balaam, you should not be expecting him to speak again and again.
Peleyamta kattar besinaru, ni pogadin chunnan.
The Lord told Balaam not to go.
Adutthal thiripi ukkandji jaumani, naan innoru trip besan, jaumanra, kattar enna sollarana pakalana, kadesal pooyinrur oru zathangadu.
And he again and again asked the Lord, and there was a voice to go say.
Valeele avanai kollappattar.
And on the way, he tried to kill him.
Anavilan ningal sariyana vathile vilingikunnekin, ningal oru life la oru settlement karakavanga.
You come to your right settlement in your life.
Idhe pogurila, petturalukka oru kadama irukradu.
On the same way, the parents too have duty.
Andha pillay kuritha devunde thittam enna.
And what's the plan about that child?
Ah, Rebeccaalude, vaittila rendu pillagal modikundrundhabodhu.
When two children were struggling in the womb of Rebecca.
Andha varama, mudiun, andha pillay, andha pen, andha varama thale kettan.
And she was wondering and asking what would be the result.
Appalu, andha rendu pillagaludai lifea bati kattar andha thaitha pesithara.
And clearly, Lord spoke to the mother clearly about their life.
On karpatil rendu pillagal modikundrakradu.
In your womb, there are two children.
Muthavan nilayavanai sevipan.
And the eldest will serve the youngest.
Eavladu karakthana vasanangal, anga pesappattanu paranga.
See how the right words are spoken there.
Thuthukudilai oru thaika oru pillak parandadu.
In two degree, the mother had a child.
Avanga parandavunne, andha pillakaavu jebichanga.
And they prayed for the child.
Andha varama, andha pillay kuritha unguade nokkam enna.
What's the plan about this child, Lord?
Rajakalukka kanakuparpan chunnan.
He said, it was said that he will look into the accounts of the kings.
Avangal kadu puriyala.
And they didn't understand that.
Rajakal kaalam, mudinji, ippo jananayaga nara mariyarche.
Now it has become a democracy and not monarchy.
Ah, epri narako.
And how it will happen?
Anan naatkal ponnabodhu.
In course of time.
Andha savaran income taxla, priyavisara maranare.
And that brother became a great officer in income tax.
Orunal Delhi la irundhu oru order vandadu.
One day, he received an order from Delhi.
Mayursur Palace ride vandano.
And Mayursur Palace should be raided.
Anga poi fulla kanakupakannu chunnan.
And account should be checked there.
Ah, ivanga ponnanga.
They went there.
Anga priyabetti eduthukudanga, suitcase la panathala, kodikkanakala kodhu, kanakka close pannitanga chunnanga.
And a crores of money was given and.
Naantodamattin chullidara.
He said that he won't touch that.
Apana andha thaikisindavandhu, namuade payanakattar sonnadu nisirare, niravetcharare.
Then only the mother understood the Lord was fulfilling what was said.
Avacholliyum chayadurupara.
And will go without doing after saying.
Adinala midhalavadu, petturgaloo, andha thittathu ningal vilingikollanu.
So the parents also should understand the plan.
Pillagalukka kalyanakaradu, kattar ungalate besinaru, na kalyanakattivayinka.
If the Lord says that there should be marriage, you solemnize the marriage.
Anan adiyanarathal, andha pillagalukka siyoonukku, aalaippun chunnan, akadavatharandu viddunga.
If the children have a calling to Zion, open the doors.
Esuvinude thaayagay marial, esu siluvaila thongumbadhu, tan jeevanayay, andha dattal apdhi retthamai uuchinall, tan taan petcha pillathongumbadhu, apriyay oru patthayam unu irudayathai, uudhirivipohum enruchonnava artai andhakina niravetchappadadu.
Mother of Jesus, when he was hanging on the cross, she was also shedding blood and a sword pierced through her.
Yostchuparanga, andha vaartai andhakina niravetchappadadu.
And that word was fulfilled in the.
Oru patthayam unu irudayathai uudhirivipohum.
The sword will pierce through your heart.
Esu siluvaila thongumbadhu, andha thaanganirundhar, kadaikundrundha.
When Jesus was hanging on the cross, that mother was crying.
Adudan siyoonukku mulakkalaga mariponnadu.
And that became the cornerstone to Zion.
Apripattha thaikalaga, thagappanmaraaga, nam maravendidhu avasiam.
It is very essential for us to become such mothers and fathers.
Midhalavadu, Gilgal, devasiththathai vilingikolvadu.
And Gilgal is understanding the will of God.
Adu, adu oru sakkaram, oru vattamadu.
And that is a wheel or a circle.
Esakil midhalam adhikaratil chollaappattadu, pola, jeevangal engi ponnado, angalam sakkrangalum poikundeyirundhadu.
As said in Esakil first chapter, wherever those lives went, the wheels.
Andha udhude jeevan engalam podo, angalaa, andha devasiththam chigiravan, poikundeyirupan.
Wherever the life of God goes, he that does the will of God also will go there.
Oruveela time edutthalam paravala, devasiththathu ningal vilingikolungal.
Even if takes some time, it's not a matter, you understand the will of God.
Kooda oru vara irundhu, rendu vara kalichu kalyanakattavala thappulla.
And it's not waiting for two more weeks and getting married.
Katturudaiyathittathu ningal vilingikolungal.
And you have to understand the will and plan of the Lord.
Kattar besuvaru.
And the Lord will speak.
Ni devasiththathukaathukka kathirkum badhu, nanmayum paribhurunumaana devasiththam innadanruch, paguttiriyathakka, avgalmanam putidagradu, naale, ningal maru rubamagungal, enruch, Romar 2:12.
In Romans 12:1 and 2, it is said that we will be transformed and knowing the will of God and we can discern that.
Midhalavadu, devasiththathai vilingikolvadu.
First of all, understanding the will of God.
Devasiththathai vilingikondaparag, midhalavadu narakkaya narakkavendiyay, eduthukollappadavendiyay manidhanukku, uyyanukku narakkavendiyay sambavam enna?
And if you understand the will of God, the man to be caught up, what will happen in him?
Midhalavadu, Yousua Aindha adhikaram onbadha vasanathinpadi.
According to Joshua 5:9.
Devasiththathai vilingikottam inbe, om meela irukka, palayannindheyal, martaappadavendam.
When you accept the will of God, the reproaches, the old reproaches on you should be removed out.
Adithan vedam sutthi kattukradu.
And that's what the Bible points out.
Andha nindhey porattappattavadinall, andha edathukka Gilgal enruch pairidappattadu.
As the reproach was rolled away, that place was called Gilgal.
Ningal enakala, uyyathukvaranu, oru priyay saintaitu than uyyathukvaranu.
You may think that only after becoming a big saint, you have to come for the ministry.
Apri ala.
It's not so.
Paavu, paul chullukradar, paavikalil pradana paaviyake, naan chullukradar.
Saint Paul says, I am the chief of the sinners.
Enakadiriyo.
I know.
Idhe, vaygaachu, palathukke keela, bodha edichu, paduthirundha paya, ineki namu uyyathilirka, terima?
And the boy who was under this bridge intoxicated, now he is in the ministry today.
Indha palathukke keela paduthikaravana.
And he was lying beneath this bridge.
Kattar avanay thottu, avanay siyona macheerukar.
The Lord had touched him and made him Zion.
Olakathothuthukumunne, krisuvukul, namitirindukundavare, adi sariyai niravetchukaravare.
He that had found us and chosen us before the foundation of the world will do that properly.
Ah, indha devasiththathai vilinginaparag, namukkula narakkavendiyay mukkiyamana anubavam, andha palayapayargal, palayaketta thanmigal, namivittum maranu, adu da, viswasa payanathin, paralogu payanathin thovakkam.
Having understood the will of God, the old nature and things should change and that's the beginning of the spiritual faith life.
Adu varikin, namukkavundu, palaketta payargal irukkom.
And till then, there will be many plans.
Ennatan namuade palayamanishana vechi, namukke, palayapala titles irukkom.
And based on the old man, we may have many titles.
Ah, amavichara karan soluvanga, mosamana pombalan soluvanga, apa mosamana alumbanga, ennallamo namukku palayakkaraktra vechi, namukku oru sela payargal irukke.
Based on our old character, we have names like that adulterer and other names.
Isravil janangalke enna payarundichu?
What name the Israelites had.
Naadavudigal enruch payarundhadu.
And they were the vagabonds.
Ebreyergal enruch payarundhadu.
Ebreyer. And the Hebrews.
Adimigal enruch payarundhadu.
And the name slaves.
Shengal sumukkaraavangal nu payarundhadu.
And those who carry the bricks.
Ah, epridilam palap payargal irundichu, indha adimithanathunudai, andha nindheyal allam porattappadu, sondha edathala kaal vetchanga, pathingala, kaanannuka apuravu, aduktham Gilgal.
With those names, they had the reproaches, when they stepped into their own land, their name was changed and that became Gilgal.
Oru devunde pillay enruch sollukaravan, andha devasiththathai vilingikondapinbu, avan meela irukkara thana thiyapayargal, nikkaappadavendum.
When the child of God accepts the will of God, all the evil names he has should be removed.
Yousua naankam adhikaram, ivatham vasanathay parkumbadhu.
In Joshua 4:20, we see.
Oru devunde pillay Gilgalil vandhu vittan enruchonnal, avan Yordanaile, andha Gilgalil irundhu panirundhu karkal eduthukundu boyi, andha Yordanaile naatinarag.
And if a child of God is said that he has come to Gilgal, from Gilgal, they planted twelve stones.
Gilgalil irundhu panirundhu karkal kodu boyi, Yordana la kariburundhu odukara Yordana le nappattadu, adu innal varikum, andha kariburundhu odukara Yordana in mathile, nirkradu.
The stones were taken, twelve stones were taken from Gilgal and planted in Jordan and still they are found.
Abrinan ennaartam?
And what's the meaning of it?
Oru devunde pillay devunde thittathu purindapinbu, sahummarae, indha anubavathulae, apriyay nikka vandam.
A child of God, having understood the plan and will of the Lord, till the death, he should be steadfast in this experience.
Nam standbani kattanoo.
We should prove and stand.
Unudai astivaram karaktharukkano.
Your foundation should be correct.
Kanmalayath thondini astivaram poravendam.
Digging the rock, you have to lay the foundation.
Ninga paranga kariburundhu odukara Yordana la oru kalli apdhi nikka mudiyam.
How can the stone stand in the flooding Jordan?
Anaa, Gilgalil irundhu eduthu vayavappatta panirundhu karkal, innal varai nirkradu enruch vedam sutthi kattukradu.
The Bible points of that, all the twelve stones taken from Gilgal are still found in Jordan.
Yousua naalam adhikaram, irupada vasanathay nam parkumbadhu, adina vilingikollamudiyam.
From Joshua 4:20, we can understand that.
Idi yadik kandvikradu.
And what does it show?
Appalu devasiththathu ni vilingikondaayo, adukkupinbu sahgu varikani standbani kattanoo.
And when you have understood the will of God, till your death, you should stand and prove it.
Yaar maranalu sari, yaar vandhalum ponnalu sari.
Whether others may come or go.
Enna porattangal vandhalu sari.
Whatever troubles may come.
Ni stronga nikkanu.
You should stand strongly.
Enna vandhalu sari.
Whatever may come.
Maranamo, jeevanamo, pasiyoo, pattinio, nirvanamo, nasamoosamo, uyervoo, thaalvo, vere endha sisti analam, krishtavin anbyavittu, enne vera birippavan, ya.
Whether it is life or death or starvation or anything, what will separate me from the love of Christ?
Devasiththathai vilinginaparag, adilastanbani nikkanu, urudiyani nikkanu.
Having understood the will of God, you should steadfastly stand in that.
Adal endamatthum oravay kudadu.
And there shouldn't be any change in that.
Midhalavadu, devasiththathai vilingikolunga.
First of all, understand the will of God.
Unguade buttiyamathunga.
And change your mind.
Adutthastanbangan.
And next, you stand.
Ningal irukkardala standbani kattanoo.
Where you are, you stand in that.
Unakkukoncha balanirundhum, ni enne marudaliyamal irukkavadinall, naan unakkuttharanda vasalai katleedu venkattar chullara.
The Lord says, though you have a little strength and still you have not denied me, I will keep an open door before you.
Ningal oru chinnakathadichu, unna nalamari asancharakudadu.
And even in a small breeze, you should not move like a reed.
Oru prasangavitthiasamaitana odiyakudadu.
When a message is somewhat different, you should not run away.
Oru uyyakkar koichitarana odiyakudadu.
If a worker gets angry immediately, you should not run away.
Tamilal soluvan, koli midichy ensiyadu, kunji, sahada, sahakoodadu.
When the hen stamps on, the chick should not die.
Ni unakkulakrishtavin anbulay, unakkuru strongana oru thanmay irukkano.
There should be strength in your love of Christ.
Veelila prachana varla.
Problems may come in your job.
Veelila prachana varla.
Problems may come in your house.
Raamangalila prachana varla.
And in the problems.
Samudhayila prachana varla.
In the society.
Sachiila prachala varla.
Problems may come in the church.
Anan niyo, Gilgalil edukappattakal, ni stronga nikkanu.
But you are a stone taken from Gilgal, you should stand firmly.
Etthanavirakapdini nikka mudindadu.
And I'm not able to stand.
Paralogathin pathi enruch sollukradu, asindukundrakradu pathi ala.
The path of the heaven is not the one that moves.
Ni standbani kattavendam.
You should prove by standing.
Onnu samuel, padinaiyundhu, muppati, moondray parkumbadhu.
In first Samuel 15:30.
Indha edathal dan samuel aagai thundithupotan.
Only in this place, the Sam will cut Ahab into two.
Aagak enruchanana, oru amalakee rajaavai, kondruvotta edam idudan.
This is the place where the king, Amalakee King Ahab was killed.
Aagak enruchonnal, priyay yuttapurushan enruchartam.
Ahab means a great warrior.
Idi, palayamanishanudai oru mudivai kandvikradu.
This shows the end of the old man.
Devasiththathai vilingittaparag, unakkulakporattangal varakudadu, porattangalai ni thundikke vandam.
After understanding the will of God, the struggle should not come in you, you have to cut them.
Undhye palayamanu dana, ni kattupaduthavendam.
And you have to control your old man.
Ningal adavaitukollakudadu.
You should not keep that in you.
Saulunudaiyavilukka karnam adudan.
And that was the cause for the fall of Saul.
Saul, andha aagai uyirudu vaitirundhan.
And Saul spared Ahab to live.
Devasiththathai vilingittaparag, ningal steadiya nikkanu.
Having understood the will of God, you should stand steadily.
Naan thirumavun chullara.
I repeat.
Eppo devasiththathai vilingittingala, adilani, ningakadaisvarikku urudiyaga, Yordana la naattappatta karkal pola nirka vandam.
When you have understood the will of God, like the stones planted firmly in Jordan, you should also stand.
Aagai ningal thundithuvada vandam.
And you have to cut Ahab.
Amalakee valamayalai ningal thundikke vandam.
And you have to cut all the powers of Amalakee.
Paavathu ni thundikke vandam.
And you have to cut the sin.
Ni oru sariyana thundithalai, ni kunduvaravendi edan idudan.
And this is the place we have to bring in the right cutting.
Ninga paththamasam, sumandhu oru pillay pettadukkriere.
By carrying the child for ten months, you bat the child.
Anan pillavirandutaparag, thoppulkudiya, arukkavendum enruch, oru sattam irukradu, satthiyam irukradu, neyadi irukradu.
When the child is born, the naval card should be cut and that is the truth and the law.
Illayam pilla, naan tham pathan, naan tham avachikuvan chullidu, ningal thoppulkudiya arukamarunna, onnu kurigipattanarathapul, ni sahano, illan, andha pilla sahano.
If you do not cut the naval card, sever that, both either you or the child should die.
Adubole.
Similarly.
Devasiththathai vilingikondi, indha krishtavamarkathala, devigathala. When the child is born, the naval cart should be cut and that is the truth and the law. If you do not cut the naval cart, suffer that both either you or the child should die. In the Christian market, the day of the Lord, you are going to do it. Having understood the will of God and after coming into this fellowship, if you do not suffer the things that have to be and there will be problems later. First of all, understanding the will of God. I am telling about the path to heaven to you. The second verse says that the next day, they went to the place called Bethel. Eliezer looking at Elisa said, Terry here, I pray the Lord tells me to go to Bethel. He said, I will not leave thee and I say this according to the life of the Lord. Now he has understood the will of God. And now he is steady. Now he has started following him. And only with those who will be caught up, the one who does the ministry have to be caught up will go. Now he too journeys to Bethel. Both from Gilgal go towards Bethel. And what is said there in Bethel? And they asked, an incident is going to happen. And your master is going to be taken up today. Do you know about your story, they asked? In this way, in the church, many questions will arise to discourage you. Even those who are in this church with you, they will discourage you. And they are not ordinary people, they are the sons of the prophets. Even after coming to this path, even the workers will discourage you. Even good believers will discourage you. But what you have to say. In the third verse, he says that, yeah, I know it, hold thee your peace. And those who discourage you, looking them, you have to say that you, I know it and you keep quiet. They will say that it is not possible for you, you will come back. In my family, in my father's line, somebody had gone to the. In my mother's line, somebody had gone to the ministry. And I had not seen him. And he was very famous also. After some days, he had gone out. I didn't, I knew the matter but not the person. After I had come to the ministry. He had gone to the house. I came to know that your son had gone to the. I myself have come out and why did you send him? And he was not ready to stay here, he had gone. And after seeing all things, in three years, he will come back, he said. And he is a pastor. And when it was told unto me, I said, why did you allow him to enter? And talking with the person who had left the ministry is a foolish thing. He that called me is faithful, this is thirtieth year in grace. Not for pride, I say. It is the Lord who makes a stand. Discouragers will discourage you, but you are the stones planted in Jordan. All those who are with us will topple us. But if the Lord is with you, you will not be shaken. On the right hand of the man who is beside the Lord. And having understood the will of God, he should not abide there. After standing in the Lord, next where we have to go? Bethel means the house of the Lord. Or the door of the heaven. And this is the right path of the ministry. And the other workers, other people also do the ministry, but when we understand the will of God, we have to go to the house of God. When Paul came for the ministry. Immediately receiving the anointing, next day, he started the ministry. He didn't have the calling for ministry. Emotionally started the ministry. He said that for thirty years, I was in Arabia. Not counseling with flesh and blood. And I didn't counsel with those who were apostles before me. In Galatians first chapter, we can see this verse. And in Galatians, first chapter sixteen seventeen eighteen, after three years. Having understood the will of God, the place where you have to go is the house of God. You have to go to the doors of heaven and not moving around, lightering in the city. Having understood the will of God, go straight to the house of God. In Genesis twenty eight, eleven and twelve, only going to Bethel, he had visions. And the will of God was revealed to him. Here only he had visions and promises. Only when you go to the house of God, the Lord will give you promises. And that is found in our ministry, knowing the will of God, we come for training in the faith home. Only in the house of the Lord, we are trained. Immediately going and doing the ministry is not a great question. Having understood the will of God, there in that place, we have to receive the promises from the Lord. It is said only there he made a vow. Knowing the will of God, you have to make vows and you have to pour your life as the drink offering. Glory be to the holy name of the Lord. Having understood the will of God. You have to make a vow for that. And you have to submit yourself for that. And you have to sacrifice yours for that. And you have to understand that clearly. When I visited a place. A father and mother came and saw. I didn't know anything about them. Our daughter is in a good job and she wants to come for the ministry and we surrender her for that and pray for that. How many children? Only one daughter. As the father surrendered his only begotten son to be crucified, the parents came to give forward that his own daughter to the Lord. That history is a marvelous one. This brother was a Hindu brother. And his wife was his relative. Somehow accepted Christ and saved. And he went to the elder sister and asked for the. And will you give this, your daughter in marriage to me? Somehow I will convert her as a Hindu. In this manner, the brother swore and married that girl. And they got a daughter. And he was an ordained devotee of Vivekananda. And he got a female child. And the secretary of Vivekananda, Nivedhika, was given to the name. One who was dedicated for God. And that name was given. Know what the Lord did. And instead of he converting that sister, he became a Pentecost believer. This is the work of the Lord. If you go in a different route, he will come in. When he was steadfast in converting that sister, God changed him. She is dedicated for the sake of the Lord and for the sake of the ministry, now we surrender her. You have hundreds of children, dozens of children, at least one, what are you doing with your children? You expect somebody to send their children to the ministry and you want to find fault with them. You want to steal Paul to pay Peter. You want to question others like that. Hmm. Only when you have surrendered your children for the ministry, you will know the preciousness of that and you will pray for your children. Only you will have the burden over the ministry and you will praise and pray for everybody involved in that. Having understood the will of the Lord, you should be doing the ministry not independently, but only in the house of the Lord, that is the support. And if they come, will they stand is the question. Standing or moving, everything in him. And those who said that they would achieve something are not here, but only those who didn't know anything are standing. Jacob, when he was in the howling wilderness, leaving the parents, he had vision and that is called Bethel. And there, the Lord spoke to him certain things. Having spoken, he said. I will never forsake thee nor leave thee till I fulfill what I have spoken to you. The Bible says, he that calleth is faithful and he will do as it is. In Genesis twenty eight fifteen. I will not leave thee till I have. Having, if you are coming to Bethel, the Lord will never forsake you. According to Judges twenty twenty seven, the ark of the Lord is still in the house of the Lord. Why the concepts vary from our ministry and other ministries? Why there are differences in the statues of our ministry and other ministries? We go to the heaven in this path. Knowing the will of God at Gilgal, the place you have to come to Bethel. In Judges twenty eighteen and twenty three. What is said there? Go to Gilgal, the house of the Lord, you shed tears and understand the ways of the Lord. Having understood the will of the Lord, in our order, we should come into the house of the Lord and there is a control there and we should exercise that. And what is said in Timothy? In first Timothy, third chapter. I write you to understand how you have to behave in the house of the Lord. And having understood the will of the Lord, where you have to come is the house of God. This is the path in which Elia. This is the path in which Elia. To go to heaven, we have to go. Having understood the will of God, the believers should come to the place that is church. Only in the church of the Lord, the ark of the Lord is found, only there you can shed tears and separate your life. Having gone to the house of the Lord. Having gone to Bethel, Elija said, the Lord tells me to go to Jericho. Jericho is a cursed place. Only after coming to the house of the Lord, the ministry is given. It's the greatness of the ministry. And bearing the curse of the people. Don't come to the ministry expecting that wearing jippa, you can beautifully go in a car. And many think that as a top host. And this path, you have. The way to Zion is through the drainage. And Jericho is a cursed path. And towards the cursed place, Jesus traveled. Our ministry is to open the eyes. Devil has blinded the eyes of the unbelievers. When Jesus went there, a father and the son both were blind, how their life would be. What's the intention of the ministry? Not remaining the faith home, singing songs and eating. And going to Jericho is opening the eyes of the people and removing the curse of the people. This is what the Lord expects in every worker of God. Not that the brother went, the sister went, I have also come. Since that brother said, I have come and if I understood this, I would not have come. You should not speak like that. Even now, you have to take accounts. Your workers meeting was going on once. And he made the sister to stand. Have you worked out the accounts? Go back and calculate the accounts. Should not turn back after keeping the hands on the car. Whether death or life, you have to go into Jericho. From Bethel, not going up, but you have to go to the place of curse, Jericho. Jericho is a narrow, a place of narrow path. And from Bethel, the next ministry is opening the blinded eyes of the people. I believe that you will have a good knowledge about ministry today. Not only for the workers, but all the people, those who go to the heaven. Nobody can go to Jericho. If anyone goes to Jericho, he is lost. But Jesus Christ went to that place. In the house of the Lord, it is not a comfortable ministry, but it's the ministry of opening the eyes of the people. In the house of the Lord, it is not a comfortable ministry but it's the ministry of opening the eyes of the people. These are the lost days, the devil has blinded the eyes of the people. That's what the Bible says. Second Corinthians four four. In the manner of the manhood of the Christian, the world has been deprived of its manifold blessings. You have to deliver the people from their blindness. Your worker goes to the place, that is the place where he opens the eyes of the people those are blinded. And with salvation, the believer should not stop. Having come to Pentecost, we should not be deceived saying. You have to go to Jericho. You have to bring the blinded people into truth. You have to deliver the people from their blindness. That's our ministry. That is the path of the heaven. And next, accepting the curse of others. In Galatians three thirteen. He that is lifted in the tree is cursed. But Jesus Christ became a curse for us. The ministry of going to Jericho is Christ became a curse for us. Accepting the curse of others. How many of us can accept that? Going to Jericho is a duty fallen on us. Jacob, to be blessed, he went into the father. In Genesis twenty seven three, we can see. But when he was going, he said. If father finds me out, he will curse me, he says. You know what the mother said. You need not worry about. Don't think about anything. If any curse like comes like that. Genesis twenty seven twelve and thirteen. This is the work of a worker of God. When he prays for the sickness of the people, he becomes sick and the people are healed. Jesus became a curse, removed the curse of the whole world. We are also doing the same ministry now. Colossians one twenty four. And what is said there? The sufferings that come to the worker of God and the believers are. And which is behind the afflictions of Christ, we fulfill that. And for the sake of the troubles of the people, you fast. For the sake of the problems of the people, you. To remove the poverty of the people, you pray. For the salvation of the people, you wait and pray. For the salvation of the people, early morning you cry unto the Lord. This is the ministry accepting the curse of the people on us. This is the right truth. Jesus Christ did the same. Accepting the curses of the people, he bore the cross. It's not sufficient if you come to. You should come to Jericho too. Only in Jericho, the blinded people will have vision and see Jesus. He hung his life on the cross and accepted the curse of the people on him. In Tesalone. In Tesalone city, said that a worker of God is like a mother. What did that mother Rebecca do? She was prepared to accept the curse of the son. A worker of God is the one who accepts the curses of the people on him. And that's the truth. Why the workers fall sick? Why the workers have sufferings and. When they struggle for the people, those powers would attack them. In Colossians two one. What does the Bible say? And I want that you should know that I have a great conflict because of you and many people whose face I have not seen. A lion caught a lamb in the park of David. When he struggled to deliver that, that power attacked him. This is the struggle of the workers of God. For the disease of man. For the goodness of people. For the pains of the people. They go and stand in between, that is the ministry of Jericho. Jesus went to Jericho. Good Sir Martin went the sort of that man and admitted him in the inn. On the way to Jericho, he was beaten to half death. Good Samaritan was going in the path of Jericho. Only he took him to the chowry. The ministry of Jericho is bringing the affected people into the church. How many of us can do such work? This is the greatness of our ministry. In Psalm one not eight nine. One not nine eighteen. He clothed himself with the curses of the people. The reason for wearing this garment. Why we are not wearing shirts and other dress like others? And the outward appearance of this garment is accepting. And if you wear this dress and stand in the road, all will resist. Whose curse? They have taken the curses of the people on them. This is the concept. How many of you decide to go in this path to heaven? Not only this. Having come to this place, the Elija said, the Lord tells me to go to Jordan. He tells me to go to the other bank of Jordan. He immediately said, there also I will follow. This is a very important part. And whether understanding the will of God or not, they leave or. Some coming to the house of the Lord, they return. Some accepting the curses of the people, they go back. All the curses make his future nothing. The most important thing comes next. And Jordan means going down. This is the last portion. The end is the most important part of the ministry. The beginning may be simple but the end should be perfect. In running race, many can run in different ways but in the end you should have one. Jordan means going down and. In the ministry of the Lord, wholeheartedly we should go down. We should not backslide. Should not say those are not. Fifty sons of the prophets were watching. That's what the Bible says. You can see that in second Kings. Second Kings two seven. And all will watch. But only two went into Jordan. Others will be watching you but you should come like Jesus for this. What does John twelve twenty two say? What does the Bible say? And only for this I have come to this time. Like Jesus, a child of God should say that, only for this purpose. Seeing the sufferings, you should not backslide. Coming to the ministry, you should not backslide. Seeing the resistance, you should not backslide. Seeing the chastisement, you should not. Whatever may come, you should not backslide. Will a man like me. Will hide in the temple. And by all these things, by he that loves us, we will be triumphant. And we have come for this one. If you carry the cross, you should be crucified on the cross. In first Corinthians first chapter. There is a subject called the doctrine of the cross. What is the doctrine of the cross? Bearing the cross. And carrying the cross. And these things are not. Giving the life on the cross. Not coming to the ministry but dying is more important. That is the most important thing. Not coming to the ministry or carrying the cross but giving the life on the cross. Not only Jesus carried the cross but he gave up his life on the cross. And John twelve twenty four says that if the wheat, corn dies, it will give a lot of. It's not important that. It's not important you send to your children. They should go into Jordan and leave. It would flood down the banks. If you stumble, it will carry away. If you want to cross that, you should go into that bowl. If God permits, I will speak about the doctrine of cross. The perfection of the doctrine of cross is giving the life on the cross. The cross which Jesus carried. In the same cross, he gave up his life at Dolgada. This is the perfection of this way. He was the one who was taken up before the eyes of all and he is going to come back. Whatever may be the situation, you have to go down into that. Jordan is not an ordinary river. It will be flooding always. It's not a silent river. In first Chronicles eighteen fifteen, it is said that one group. First Chronicles twelve fifteen, we see that. These people having a great speed. Not ordinary ones. Jordan will be overflowing and these people will swim and cross that. And they would not fear death. In America, they were taking people. A sister had come for the ministry. It was asked why she was coming. I come to live for Jesus. They didn't take her. She came out. Even if I say I want to live for Jesus, they didn't accept. What was asked? Why have you come? Only to die for Jesus, we have to come for the ministry. Sons of God will not mind the overflowing Jordan, they will cross it. What's the reason? One first Chronicles twelve eight. They were having the face of the lions. Swift as the rose. They would be very fast. They had come for the Lord, whether death or birth, they will. After coming to the ministry, you should not think twice. I won't do this or that, if you say so, you should not come at all. After coming here, when the order comes, you have to go. If you say it's not so Lord, you will become Lord, his wife and his children. If the worker says it's not so Lord, then he is lost. At the time of war, the flight should be ready and when the order is given, they should be ready to feed. And this is the way in which we should be good warriors for Christ. But in this world, there is no reward at all. In this world and for this ministry, no reward. Only in the heaven we can get. There is difference between washing clothes here and there at home. And for that, cooking, you will have a saree but for here. The present sufferings cannot be compared to the glory to. And here, your ministry will not be much accepted, only in the heaven, he will give the reward. No praising here. Pastor Casey Vargas allowed me to give testimony in Chennai. And some people even cried after. And even when the testimony was going on, they were all moved. And after the testimony, he fooled me. And next to the time also. And this ministry is breaking. Immediately, they will not guard. Glory be to the name of the Lord. This is the way in which we break. And the way that makes you. And this is the difference between this ministry and other ministry. They gave me a church. First in charge. First in charge. Some twenty five members were there. And I was also thrashing and giving message. It was over. Next morning, the elders prayed. He was the one who brought me up and he had the right to break me too. Pastor Casey Vargas, he saw me off at two thirty. And from assistant, he made me an in-charge in address. In the elders' prayer, he made me stand. And from assistant, he made me an in-charge in address. In the elders prayer, he made me stand. How was the meeting? It was good. How many came? Twenty-five. Did you give message? How much offering you receive? And one believer had given me one rupee, it was in eighty-seven. I said I got one rupee. The value of your message is just one rupee, he said. I heard that, but I didn't know. I'm telling you, they are like this. Today, it's only touch me not. All touch me not. Only with the face of lion, if you come as rose, we can go into Jordan. This is the path to heaven. The Lord took Elia only in this path. This is the path. This ministry is full of sufferings. Why it's filled with? And only this path of sufferings gives us glory. If we suffer with him, we will also rule and reign with him. You would have taken baptism. But go to, to go to Zion and Jerusalem, you have to take another baptism. And what is that baptism? In Luke twelve fifty, it is said. The baptism Jesus had. And there is a baptism which I have to take until it is completed. When you come at the time, we will promise rest but later we will promise glory. And the path to that is suffering. And by the sufferings, he learnt obedience and became perfect. You may think, why is sufferings in the way? That's a baptism. You have to take that baptism. Why the Lord permits sufferings again and again? In first Peters four, first two verses. To rest from sin, the Lord takes us through the path of suffering. What happens here? How to cross this Jordan? The believers are hesitant because they have the fear whether they will go up to the end. And children too have the fear. The boys also have the fear. If we go, can we stand? If we go, will you stand till the end? And there is a question like that. What's the answer? How did Elia and Elisa cross Jordan? The reason was the mantle in the hand. And what does it denote? Holding the mantle, he smoked on the river and. According to Isaiah fifty-one nineteen. Fifty-nine seventeen. What is said there? To win in this way, a child of God needs zeal. To appear in an exam or competition, you need a zeal to win, otherwise it's a waste. And that's more important. You need a zeal to die for the Lord and go to Zion. And by pushing somebody, we cannot take him there. There should be a zeal to give up life. The terrorists, they have the zeal and they die. If the bomb blasts, the body will be scattered. But boldly they come. Both man and woman. They come boldly. And they are ready to die today. And they say we are born to die. Why it's not possible for you to stand for truth and Jesus? You know the cultural stories of Tamil. And my son died in the war. And one said that your son was stabbed from behind and he was dead. And the mother said it's a great mistake for having. She went with a sword. To see how the son had died. The spirit had been gone through the chest. And we need such mothers in the church. How many will sacrifice your children like that? And this way is the way of cross. Without cross, no throne. And for that, we need zeal. They twisted the mantle and beat the river and divided into two. We need the same nature always. You should have the mantle always in your hand. All have the question that those who came for the ministry. Two reasons I want to place before you. One thing, they had forgotten the situation or the day for which they surrendered. Second thing. Love of Jesus waxed cold and another love had entered. That's the truth. You should be always remembering the wrath from which you have been hewn out. Many have many questions about the way we have treat the people in the ministry. It's a book. It is not the ministry that will fly in the air. What's the divine nature of this? And he told that you remember till you die what I have done for you. Until that, you should remember how he came for the ministry. Early morning at five o'clock, I left by bus and I was crying. Lord, I trust you and. I should die only in the ministry. My brother was not saved. He called me at the bus stand. They were all rough people, I was trembling. And even if he wanted, he could have carried me away. He called me. I was afraid what he would do. And the pastor also was standing. I was wondering what to do. Should not go. But decided to go. This is such a big shame to me. But one thing. Don't create another shame by coming back. Still, I remember that. At the bus stand, I told I would better die but won't come back. You'd need a zeal. And that situation you should never forget. If your love takes another diversion. You should be loving Jesus more and more. You have come to serve him alone. In Isaiah fifty-six, it is said about the ministry of the unit to love and serve him. You need a zeal. When you come into this zeal, the Lord will have greater zeal. To make you Zion or Jerusalem, he comes with a great zeal. In we see in book of Zechariah. One fourteen. When you come with the jealous, the Lord will have greater jealousy more than you. When you, the man of dust, ready to give the life for the Lord, the Lord will give his life for you. When they crossed Jordan, there was the whirlwind and he was carried. And when you want to go to the heaven, this is the only way. And leaving this, we should not, we cannot try to go in our own way. Let's all close our eyes. The path of heaven is clearly given to you. We are struggling to present you as a change. The Lord is wrestling to change you, new Jerusalem. What have you done for the Lord who called you? Let's close our eyes. A few ministers stand on the knees. In the path of the heaven, in these four places, which place you have crossed? Have you crossed Gilgal? Have you crossed Bethel? Or have you crossed Jericho? Have you crossed Jordan? If it is so, you are a person who will be carried in the whirlwind in a short moment. This is the way in which you will be caught up. Let's all close our eyes. Stand on the knees. Lord, only you called me. Don't look at the failures of the past. Don't look at the revival of the past. Don't waste your time speaking about the old stories. Don't be singing about the songs of defeats and failures. Fast is fast. Throw away everything. The Lord brings you into a new path. And it's easy for him to do miracles. Easy to remove your business. But today, he is preaching you about the path to world. If you complete the race, you should go to glory and that path he teaches you. First of all, understand the plan of the law. And roll away your reproach. And build you up steadfastly in the law. Sever all the corner relationships. Sever, cut off all the old relationships. Come into the church. Come into the house of the Lord. Wow and offer yourself as a living sacrifice. And the Lord is the one who speaks. Till he fulfills the word, he will not leave you. And for the sake of the people, stand in the breach. The path of the ministry is the path of curse. Accept the curse of the people. Submit to remove the blindness of the people. Come down for the Lord for in the ministry. Only for this I have come into the hour. Until the curse is removed, I submit. How many of you submit like that? And take up the cloak of zeal. Whatever may come, I will stand for Jesus. Those who say so, put up your right hand. If you have the zeal, the Lord will be having greater zeal. If you, the man of dust, having such a zeal, the Lord, God of gods, will have greater zeal. Let the Lord destroy all the powers that come against the vision of Zion. Let the Lord destroy all the powers that are hindrances to the journey in Jerusalem. How many of are going to be sellers for the Lord? Hold on to the mantle. And Jordan will give way for you. And submit to give the life for Jesus. Amen, hallelujah, hallelujah. This meeting will come to an end in a few minutes. And before that, in your hand, you will have the mantle. You may be believers. Or workers. Or newcomers. Today, the Lord is going to give you a grace. Going to give a power. Going to give a zeal. Going to give a mantle in your hand. You have to divide all Jordan and cross that. Let the anointing for that descend. Let the power come down for that. Let it be Christ who sustains you. Hallelujah. This way will not help those who have fear and terror. You throw away your fear and terror. I repeat. You stand for Jesus, the whole heaven will then stand for you. When you stand for the Lord, will the Lord keep quiet? If you take one step for yourself, the Lord will take thousand steps. Let that power come on. Oh Lord, I will stand for you. This ministry is a holy ministry. It's a ministry of sacrifice. And without the mind of sacrifice, we cannot carry out the ministry. Only those have the mind of sacrifice can carry out the ministry. Mary had that mind of sacrifice. That's why she kept her children on the altar. And the child was broken and hanging. Even then, she submitted for that plan. And we are also coming to that way. And this meeting is going to come to an end. In this way, where you have come? If you are in Gilgal, come to Bethel. If you are in Bethel, you come to Jericho. If you are in Jericho, you come to Jordan. Come with the mantle in your hand. With this, desire for zeal, you come. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. The Bible says that the zeal of love is more terrible than hell. And closing your life is simply you can love the Lord. We love all. We love all human beings the love on God will never change. You stand for the Lord. And Jordan will give way. Don't fear anything. Your God will go before you. All the powers will give way to you. And you stand in the zeal of love loving Jesus alone.